Hammer City Council Public Hearing Agenda, May ninth, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Wells.
Public hearing item number one.
An ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances relative to abandoned and junked motor vehicles and other provisions relative thereto. Bobby Mitchell.
Good evening. As per our previous meeting, this is for amendment to change the ordinance, existing ordinance on abandoned vehicles to allow code enforcement to be more effective with getting vehicles removed from private property at the expense of the owners through the towing companies after prior notice with the placing of stickers, notice to the date for removal of such vehicles. In the event that it's not taken care of, we have the option to do, which I think was recommended on a previous meeting, to remove the city to confiscate and hold those in a private storage facility owned by the city. I think the primary concern is to alleviate the length of time that the previous ordinance gave the owners to keep those abandoned vehicles there, and this will expedite that process.
Anyone from the public have a question on this item? Anyone from the council?
So y'all, are y'all planning on going, if it's passed, planning on going into effect immediately or is it a process of great spirit, or y'all just planning on working on it as soon as it goes into effect?
We'll be guided by the advice of the city attorney. As soon as it's effective, we can legally proceed.
As soon as it's effective, you'll be able to proceed.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you, Bob. Item number two.
An ordinance to approve a request by Citco Group LLC to rezone lot S-1 and lot S-2 in block 43 from MX-CBD to MX-C located at 201 East Robert Street and 306 North Cypress Street, per survey by Randall W. Brown and Associates, Inc., dated 12/27/2022, with uses prohibited shown on the agenda.
This is a fairly straightforward rezoning request. It was heard at a public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April thirteenth, and they made a unanimous recommendation to move forward with the rezoning. There was only one person absent from that meeting. It was introduced at our last meeting here at the city council. This is in District One, so Councilman Andrews, this is your district. The existing zoning of this parcel is mixed commercial. What they are looking to go to is the, I'm sorry, it's currently zoned mixed commercial business district. What they look to go to is mixed commercial. The difference between the two is outlined in your packet, and what they have done is list all the things that they are willing to take off that list, because truly, this is more about wanting to subdivide the two parcels, and there is a potential sale going forward. And when they looked at the subdivision, the lots just weren't wide enough to meet the requirements of how they face and how they're addressed. So they have listed all the things that they're willing to take off the table with the rezoning, and a few stay on, but overall, it looks like a good fit for that neighborhood. On all sides, are mixed commercial business districts. One, the house to the north is a single-family residence. The parcel to the south is a business. The parcel to the west is the old feed and seed parcel that's now vacant land, and then the parcel to the east is a duplex.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council? Thank you, Lacy. Number three.
Introduction of an ordinance authorizing the operation of golf carts on certain streets in the city, prohibiting the use of golf carts on certain streets, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes, this is an ordinance basically to meet the Louisiana's state revised statute that allows golf carts on city streets if the city were to pass an ordinance allowing them. So we are putting some safeguards in there, some registration requirements, so that golf carts have to be registered with HPD. The certain golf carts, the golf carts have to have the certain minimum requirements for their condition, which just mimic what the state rules are. And we have in there a permitting fee, and, oh, there's also an insurance requirement, but that is required under state law. So we've talked about this a little bit previously, and I can answer any questions that there may be.
Any questions or concerns from anyone from the public? Anyone from the council? Hammer City Council Regular Session Agenda, May ninth, excuse me, 2023, 5:37 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
And Councilman Wells.
Present.
If you received a copy of your agenda, there's a copy of the set rules that are in place. We're going to follow those rules on the front of your agenda. I ask that you govern yourself accordingly when you come up to speak. Make sure that you give us your name and your address, and speak clearly into the microphone. At this time, I actually would stand for our prayer. Most gracious, love eternal, Father, we thank you on this evening. Father God, we just give you the glory and the honor that is due your name, thanking you for who you are. Father God, just thanking you for your darling son, who too you allowed to die upon the cross just for our sins that cover us right now. We just thank you for that right now. Father God, we thank you for this country that we live in, a country where we are able to move about freely right now. We just don't take that for granted. We just thank you right now. Father, I ask that you continue to bless this council, bless each person that serves on this council, continue to bless their families, continue to bless their districts in which they serve. I ask that you continue to bless the administration, the mayor, continue to bless our fire department and our police department, that they continue to protect and serve us in this city. Father, if at every time we need you, we need you right now. And we just thank you right now, Father God, for your word declared. We know that you are not the author of confusion, and that we know, Father God, that you declare everything to be done decent, order-pleasing, and in your sight. So on this evening, Father, we just continue to lift you up, continue to give you thanks, asking that you continue to guide us, cover us, and keep us, protect us from all hurt, harm, and danger. Therefore, we give you all glory, all honor, and all praise. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. I ask that all veterans and active military please render a proper salute for our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm sorry. Can I get an approval of our minutes for April twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three meeting, please?
I make a motion to approve.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
And Councilman Wells.
Right. Final adoption of ordinance, old business, number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to provide for the permitting of mobile food vendors. Councilman Andrews.
Okay. We've had several discussions and several meetings on this particular item. I know Andre has circulated a cleaned-up version of everything that we have discussed, the agreements that we have come to on these particular items. So if there's anyone here in the public that has any questions or concerns, you can step to the mic at this time, please. Anyone from the council?
Mr. Jackson.
No, it's not, Mr. Jackson. It's not.
I'll just say, Andre, I saw that your red line changes, which were very helpful. We've had so much really good input on preparing this ordinance, and the red line that you sent was very good. For going through this, do you want us to, if we're going to vote on this, do it line by line? Can we say, as adopted by, as you've circulated to the council? What's your suggestion?
Yes, we had a robust public hearing on this. We received lots of comments, lots of good input on it. I made the effort to bring into the ordinance those comments. Now, some comments were mutually inconsistent, so I took what I believed to be the consensus comments for the changes. I circulated those, made a red line version, circulated those to council members. It does, I believe, address those questions that were raised at the public hearing, and so if you've looked at it, and if you're in agreement, then the motion would be to adopt the ordinance as proposed, but with the amendments that were made after comments from the public hearing. And I would tell you that substantively, it confirms that no food trucks in the DDD, they are allowed in city parks, except in the DDD, in areas the city designates for those. They must meet all applicable state requirements. There's just one occupational license. There was some talk about what vendors needed. There's an occupational license that's given for an annual use. You can get a special event permit. There might, the city may place a maximum number of food trucks in city parks or other public places. We did reduce the occupational license fee, as was requested, to a hundred dollars. There was a statement about the appearance of food trucks. They must be neat in good operating condition, no vulgarity. The amplification would only be allowed for a call out for a food order, but they cannot be audible beyond seventy-five feet from the truck. A thousand feet must be the distance from a fixed location selling food. Food must stop being served at eight PM. They're not allowed in Chatham River Park unless the park board or the director gives permission. There's a fine structure. There was some talk about that. I think a consensus was the first infractions are warning, but thereafter, you get an increasing fine for each additional violation, and if you have multiple violations, your permit can be revoked. And food sales are not allowed in residential zoning areas, except if you have a special event permit. So I think that kind of summarizes the changes that were made to the original proposed ordinance.
I think you said the permit is a hundred dollars. The annual permit license is two hundred, but the special event is one hundred.
Special events, one hundred. Excuse me, thank you.
And then I like that you reduced the special event permit for our annual license holders to twenty dollars, so that they don't have to pay a hundred, just for a special event.
Yeah, there were comments about that, yes.
So Councilman Kip, since you introduced this, as far as the rules on here, do you have any problem with the rules or anything that's on the paper?
No, I have a problem with it, because this was a working arrangement with the guys that have these food trucks.
Okay.
A lot of information was brought back for the guidelines, different thing that they have to abide by by the state, even when the suggestion was made by them, that when people come to apply for their license here in the city, that they bring their truck with them, so their truck will be seen at that time. So I'm in agreement with this. I know that a lot of this is going to be a working progress as we starting out, so if there's some things that need to be changed, we can look at it along the way. But for right now, I'm satisfied.
Okay. And that being said, and the reason I said that, because if the councilman put it on, and he done went through the rules and regulations, I don't see why we need to go through each line, voting for this and voting for that, if he approved of it. And the guys that he's been talking to, they approved of it. So that's why I brought that up.
I wanted to ask about the music on that one. It says, "No mobile vendor shall operate the horn," application systems. That is seventy-five feet, or it says, "No music shall be audible beyond seventy-five feet from mobile food trucks." So is that saying the amplifier, just the, you know, calling the tickets, as far as the music playing, as long as it's not heard with, you know, further than seventy-five feet, is music or just actual horn that, you know, calls a ticket number or what?
The thought was that by the music playing in the truck while
Exactly.
that can't be heard within seventy-five feet.
Okay.
You're really not supposed to have amplification, like a slot party.
Yeah.
But you can use an amplification system to call out a food order. So if somebody has a food order, you can use that to call it out.
Okay.
Thought was the music would just be sort of in the truck for the workers, not really for music for the patrons.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's fine. You know, music in a truck, I was just, you know, seventy-five feet, I'm not too sure, you know, how close it would be on certain areas, you know. I didn't know how clear that actually was written in there.
I think a good example, think of denial. We had issues with base, and it's a privilege to be out on the streets doing what you do. So if it gets out of hand, police department has the right to shut you down. If you're not going to lower your music, if you're not going to lower your base, and you're creating issues, it's going to be our problem as an administration to try to deal with it. We've talked to the vendors as well, and we're going to work together. But that would be something that, you know, will be handled, unfortunately, by us if it gets out of hand, police department.
All right, yeah. Well, I mean, yeah, as far as a ticket number calling, I mean, that's understandable. I just didn't know the music, you know, seventy-five feet, being in a trailer playing music as opposed to seventy-five feet away. I mean, that's pretty loud. That's all I'm getting at is, you know, how that's written, you know. I mean, playing music in a trailer is fine. I mean, I don't have any, you know, nobody's, I'm not, I'm sure I'm not getting calls about that from disturbance. But seventy-five feet, somebody's house, well, not house, or somebody maybe have a business right close by that, you know, seventy-five feet may touch. That's the only reason why I was just kind of concerned about that.
Compliance, as the mayor suggests, it's got to be in compliance with all other ordinances, and if there's disorderly conduct or disruptive behavior and violation of the noise ordinance, that's all still in play. And again, as you've said, if there's obnoxious behavior, we can readdress it by eliminating the music if it gets to be a problem.
And hopefully that won't happen.
So I know that there were a few things added today that
So there was, there were comments made today. That was not, I was in the original red line. I added some comments. The substantive change dealt with parking a food truck that's not in operation, right? A food truck's not to be in operation in a residential area. So there was a concern about what happens to food trucks when they're not operating. Should there be a restriction? And the comment, there was a question about prohibiting parking food trucks in any residential areas or in MXN. And that's up for, that had not been brought up previously, so that's up for any questions or comments.
Yeah, I had some calls and some concerns about, you know, parking the trucks when they're not operated in a residential. If they go ahead and have it operating somewhere that's allowed, and then they bring it home, and, you know, it starts getting scattered out in neighborhoods where there's several food trucks all over scattered parked at home that, you know, they requested it'd be, you know, parked in a commercial area, some kind of storage, somewhere set up where it's not in a residential setting. So that's where that came from. And then that was one of the issues. And then the waste, the waste as far as trash from the trucks, you know, the actual residence, you know, residential contracts for the garbage wasn't for commercial purposes, and then they have some type of agreement with some waste management or whoever to dispose of the trash commercially, and then the waste from the grease and everything else, so where it's not poured into the city drains. It's just another way to try to regulate and protect that from happening. So that was my concern from people calling me, you know, with all the disposal, and then the sightly of a bunch of food trucks parked in residential subdivision or houses, so.
That one of the trash, I think was covered, it was clarified.
Yeah, clarified.
The only substantive one that will need some direction is about parking food trucks that are not in operation in residential areas or area zone MXN.
So I had a question about that, just because I'm not sure of the city's ordinances on it, but some of those food trucks look like a construction truck, and are construction trucks allowed to be parked at a person's home? And if they are, then how is that different? And I just, I'm not sure on our trailers, that our construction trailers allowed to be in someone's driveway?
Yes.
Okay.
As long as it's a hard surface.
Right, of course, yes.
Yes.
Then I think that that would be unfair
Right.
to say that just because it's something that's packed up and closed up tight, it's a food truck, it's not in operation, just like a construction company's trailer is packed up and following all other rules, why should a food truck not be able to be parked there? I mean, the people have talked to us before about having forty, fifty thousand dollars in these trailers. They probably have an interest in wanting to make sure that they are secure. So I'm open to comments. That's the only thing that I saw. It didn't seem particularly fair to do that. Now, of course, if you're in a subdivision, there's subdivision rules that require that. I checked the higher Kate rules. There's, it looks a little bit ambiguous there, and some of the other, and I didn't see them in any of the other overlay rules for the residential areas.
Yeah, and there are some subdivisions that have covenants that will not allow a whole lot of things. So of course, you go by that.
I think the concerns from the people that were calling were about if they had multiple, you know, right now, it's not allowed, food trucks aren't allowed in here. So if it opens up and you have multiple people come in, buy food trucks, and open up businesses, and they'll, they have to store them, well, if they're allowed to store them residentially in residential neighborhoods, you may have three or four, several in one street or whatnot, parked, and it would look, it would more look more like a commercial setting rather than a residential setting. So for them to store it somewhere in a commercial setting, since it was a commercial use, which that's kind of where the process started. If you had a hot pink or a hot yellow food truck on each side of you, if you're living in a house with no HOA restrictions, their concerns would be, they look to the left, look to the right, and across the street. So the concern of a sightly to the people's values in their areas they may live at. Right now, it's not a problem, but they're not allowed. But once you start being allowed, it may start opening up doors to having issues with that. So instead of letting it just get out of hand, to get it, you know, address it from the start. So that's kind of where their concerns were.
Good evening. Kelly West, 116 Elm Drive. Good evening, council.
Good evening.
I had no intention of speaking, but being that this subject is coming up, and it's a part of this, I don't live in a HOA, and I got this call this week. My trailer is not at all unsightly. Councilman Gonzalez, that was my point when I got the phone call. My neighbor has construction. No problem. Trailer sits out in the front on the driveway. I didn't call about his trailer. I don't see where that's fair. I'm not sure about the rest of them, as far as the trucks, because we hadn't had this conversation, but this particular thing I feel like needs to be addressed. I don't park my food trailer just anywhere, because at forty green, I want to know what's going on with it. The commissary has no rights or responsibilities to my food trailer, as far as making sure that it's not vandalized, broken to, or anything else like that. If it is at my address, it's either one, because I'm doing some construction to it, or two, that it's going to be shut down for a long period in time. The rules for the state state that we have to return to the commissary at least once a day. So as far as drainage and all the trash and all of that stuff, that's handled by the commissary. So that's not the case. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, I might want to say something. My concern is, when the law enforcement go to their truck, could we please make sure that they have their body cams on when they go to their truck saying anything? Because I don't want a police coming out there, and he don't care for me, and he end up getting me into a rage. And it ain't gonna take much to get me in a rage. So I would like to make sure we put that in there, that for every police come up to those food trucks, make sure they have their body cam on, that'll protect the city, and that'll protect the people with the trucks.
I liked the other two additions that were made today regarding and removing all debris, and then any waste, grease, or other items used in the operation can't be dumped in the wastewater unless you have a permit.
So those two were putting in already, from what Andre told me, he cleaned, he cleaned the word in.
Those are really clarifications. I think it's covered, but it was a good point to, to clarify those. Really, it's the food truck parking in residential areas, the real substantive request for the change.
So are they gonna, on the permitting spot, um, side of it, are they going to an application request some kind of a agreement with the trash or the, the grease to where they, you know, they don't just say, oh, well, you know, we got a, a contract with somebody, and then who's, who's to follow up on that?
They're gonna have to show a permit, wastewater permit, for how they're gonna discharge their wastewater, yeah.
My question is, what do you consider commissary? Where, where is that?
Uh, commissary is a, I'm sorry, is a commercial kitchen, um, which the trailers are responsible for going to for food prep and that kinda thing.
So you have a, a vendor who's in the restaurant business that allows you to
Yes, sir.
to tie in, okay.
Yes, sir. That's a, uh, that's a part of the state packet. So everybody that's operating usually has that already.
So, to approve what we have here on the table.
They need to have a motion on the table, and it would be just to specifically state whether the changes would include the prohibition from parking food trucks in area zone residential or MXN. So the motion would have to say whether, whether it's gonna include that change or not include that change. It will include the other changes that were proposed.
So all the other changes that are, uh, presented are already in there, or are all those, since you cleaned it up, would have to be mentioned as well?
Well, what, what I sent out
Yeah.
included the other two, and they was really clarifying.
Okay.
So you had, you had good points.
Yeah.
We clarified that. So those are covered.
Okay.
I think that's gonna be covered in the change. The really only significant one would be the parking of food trucks in a residential area.
Yeah, storing them, okay.
Parking, storing them. You haven't, they're not supposed to be in residential areas anyway without a special event permit.
Yeah.
So we're really just talking about after operation parking.
Yeah, so I would need to make a motion to amend, to, to amend or, or propose?
So the motion would be to adopt the ordinance as presented with the changes that were made as a result of public comment. The question's gonna be including
Okay.
if it's your motion, including that no food truck may be parked in area zone residential or MXN.
Okay.
And so Andre, these changes haven't been circulated to the public, so you don't think we have to go through them? I'm fine with that. I'd rather not, but...
Well, I summarized them. They were all, they were all discussed in the public hearing.
Okay.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure to what extent they may have been circulated, um, you know, by council members. But those were, the topics were all addressed at the public hearing. All right. And I just summarized them, just a few minutes.
I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, to adopt as changed by Andre, except not including that no food trucks may be parked in the area zone residential or MXN.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
I just wanna make a comment, though. Um, I know it wasn't gonna get voted on and passed with the, uh, not storing the food trucks in a residential area, but I wanna make it clear that I'm completely against having a food truck stored in a residential area after use. They need to be stored somewhere else in a storage unit or whatnot. It, it will probably become a problem. Hopefully it doesn't. But when people start buying them and have them stacked up all over areas that are not protected by HOAs and restrictions. So that'll probably be another issue dealing with, just like buggies and trash and everything else we have to deal with. But, um, completely against that. I think they should be stored in a commercial area and not in a residential within non-use. So that's, that's my opinion on it, and, um, and that's just for the betterment of the city as overall, how we look in value of standards. So, thank you.
All right. Again, throughout this whole process, it's been an experience, it's been a great learning experience. I'm glad that we got this behind us. I'm glad to see that they'll be able to move forward with their food trucks here in the city. Again, I thank everybody that played an important role and a part in this, and this is how the government should work.
Food trucks, welcome to the city of Hammond.
All right. New business, final adoption number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to amend the code of ordinances relative to the abandoned and junked motor vehicles and other provisions relative thereto. Bobby Mitchell.
Again, the primary change is to identify. Thanks, Andre, for the definition of abandonment being those that are in the public right of way. And unattended, the junked and wrecked vehicles would be the ones on private property where the code enforcement department can have those removed by the hiring of a licensed towing company.
Anyone from the public have any questions or concerns on this item? Anyone from the council? Pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
All right, we have some teeth. Let's get some moved.
Number two?
Thank you for receiving my list, so looking forward to it.
Final adoption of an ordinance to approve a request by CCO Group LLC to rezone Lot S dash one and Lot S dash two and Block Forty-three from MX dash CBD to MX dash C, located at two zero one East, East Robert Street and three zero six North Cypress Street, per survey by Randall W. Brown and Associates, Inc., dated twelve twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two, with the following uses prohibited listed below.
As described in the public hearing and in the last meeting, this is just a rezoning from mixed commercial business district to mixed commercial. Um, this does seem in concert and alignment with the surrounding area, and they have agreed to remove these options as eligible uses. So they're essentially scaling down that mixed commercial use.
I had a question. Was there ever, was there anyone that came to the meeting voicing any opinion at all?
There was, there was no one against it. Um, the people who came were in support of it.
Okay.
Anyone from the public? Any other questions or concerns from anyone on the council? Pleasure the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you, Lacy. Number three?
Final adoption of an ordinance authorizing the operation of golf carts on certain streets in the city, prohibiting the use of golf carts on certain streets, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes, um, as we described, this is, um, basically incorporating the ability of the city to, or the, the state law that allows the city to pass an ordinance allowing golf carts to be driven on the street if they meet certain safety requirements, have insurance, and then we've implemented a registration, um, process through HPD. And we have a lot of golf carts already on the street, so this is bringing them into compliance. We're not doing anything other than allowing them, because right now they're not allowed.
Anyone from the public? Any other questions or concerns from anyone on the council? Pleasure the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Introduction of an ordinance, introduction number one?
Introduction of an ordinance to adopt the City of Hammond budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four in accordance with the procedures of Section five dash zero three of the city's charter. Laura Hammett.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
As Ms. Lisa said, this is the introduction, uh, introduction of the ordinance for the FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget. Uh, the budget work session will be Friday, June second, at eight thirty AM for anyone who would like to attend, with the final public hearing being on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty PM.
You confident we're gonna get it all in one budget work session day?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you can't say that now, 'cause you don't know what I'm gonna say.
We gotta start off positive.
Yeah. Now, I never met with the mayor before we can sit down and talk what District Three needs, so I'm not gonna say it gonna run that easy or that smooth.
But we're gonna start positive.
That's right, I am. I heard, you heard me say the mayor. We ain't sit down and talk about District Three.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Anyone else from the council? Pleasure the council.
Make a motion, introduce.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
And as she stated, the budget work session will be scheduled for Friday, June second, twenty twenty-three, at eight thirty AM, with the final public hearing will be scheduled for Tuesday, Jan, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, at five thirty PM.
Thank you, Laura. Resolutions, resolution number one?
A resolution to ratify and award bids received for twenty-seven twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, for drainage improvements, FY twenty twenty-three, project number four two zero dash one two three zero seven. Chuck Spengar?
Not Chuck.
Please, Mr. Chuck. I'm here to, uh, request y'all's approval and award of the drainage improvement project for twenty twenty-three. Um, low bid is from Richard Price Contracting at, uh, one point eight million. Um, it's a good bit less than what our budget is. And y'all got any questions?
Anyone from the public have any questions on this item? Anyone from the council?
So this is under budget?
Yes.
Well, that's good. See if we can keep it that way. I'll make a motion, introduce.
Second.
This is a resolution, right? So just
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Approved, yeah.
You make it re-
Wrong, wrong section. Make a motion to approve.
Award to the low bidder, Richard Price Construction, one million, seven hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred sixty-one dollars.
Yep, that's the motion.
That's what I heard you say.
Mm-hmm.
Second. Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Resolution number two?
A resolution authorizing fine time catering to obtain a waiver of the open container law for the cafe that is being run in conjunction with Gnarly Barley, Casey Dagel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Coming before y'all this afternoon to get a waiver for the open container law for the cafe that's being run in conjunction. There's gonna be no alcohol sold at the cafe. The cafe is just looking to have the alcohol that's sold at Gnarly Barley being consumed on their premises during the hours that they're open.
Anyone from the public? Step to the mic, Mr. Here, and give us your name and address, please.
My name is Henry Jackson, four to six, two two six, MC Moore Row at Ambluzana, seven and zero four zero one. I'm here concerned of the business over there by Power Ridge. I can't understand why we allow this business to be where it's at in the black community. Uh, black and white ministers talk to me, how y'all let that happen. And it's happened because we don't tend to counsel me to find out what's going on. If we wouldn't have been here tonight, these things probably would've happened. And what I can understand, they're trying to ra, uh, waive the rights. Uh, I can understand that they selling, uh, alcohol on the left side, and I can understand now they trying to bring it to the, uh, to the, uh, right side. That's what I understand. And I want y'all to strike me out, because we are not in favor of them selling any alcohol near our church. It's less than, uh, it's not, 'cause I think three hundred feet that you can have alcohol from a church building.
I think it's five hundred. I think it might be, it might be five hundred, I think.
That'll change it.
It's three.
It's three.
Well, we, we gonna check it out and make sure, but this, we, we, we don't want this. Councilman, we don't want nobody waiving nothing to walk across the street with beer in their hand, whiskey in their hand, getting drunk. Next thing, they gonna be asking us to bring it to the church, put it on the communion table and serve it. It's just a bad situation. So this is what we are here for, not for y'all to accept, uh, what they trying to do with this business. I, I, we just, we just, I totally against it. And what I, I, I'd like y'all to explain something to me. They're trying to get license to move to the other side of the, of the Rowet? Or they have the license already? Tell me something, what time of day it is?
Casey, would you explain it, please?
Right now, there's not, they're not asking for another alcohol license, 'cause Gnarly Barley has-
In the mic, in the mic.
I'm sorry. Um, we're not asking for another alcohol license. Gnarly Barley has the license, and all we're doing is asking for a waiver for the cafe that's across the street. Um, there's not gonna be any more additional alcohol sold or anything else. It's just gonna give them the option of walking across the street at the cafe and consuming on the premises of the cafe.
Great.
The alcohol thing had never been discussed. When we, when we, uh, went along with the program, that building supposed to have been bringing in, uh, testing beer. And after all that, uh, testing beer, that's what it was for. That's why we didn't fight y'all in the beginning. But now this thing is getting completely out of hand. The last, uh, week ago, they blocked the street off. The people couldn't get to the church. I mean, it's just a bad situation. And, and they gonna be walking across the street drinking, somebody rolled, hurt somebody, got a problem. Uh, we totally against it, councilman. We don't want this to happen. Uh, why, why you got to go across the street to, to drink alcohol? And when you got alcohol license to sell on the other side of the street, if we didn't do that, you'd have a problem there. Because y'all, we didn't know that y'all didn't license to sell alcohol across the street from our church. We didn't know that. So y'all just keep flipping inside, and we not aware. And we gonna fight. Councilman, don't let this happen. I don't care what they say. Don't let this happen, because that is gonna, gonna be a bigger problem down the street. They would get this, they gonna want something else. And they get something else, they gonna continue to roll off. Councilman, I'm asking you not to waive whatever they asking for. I want y'all, uh, uh, vote against it.
So Casey asked you a question. Have this ever been done before in the city of Hammond?
Not that I'm aware of, councilman. No, sir.
So, and I'm a little lost, 'cause when downtown do events, downtown have to come before us and ask for open container, in which we all know the process. So now, we looking at three hundred and sixty-five days. Only one page, three hundred and sixty-five days. And normally, when people ask for something, we get more than one page, and this a part of a paragraph. And what's going on, and this is what I see, and I have nothing against the beer company or nothing else, but I do have something against, was the church notified about this alcohol being across the street?
I don't, I can't say yes or no. Um, I have Mr. Zach for-
Okay, yeah, he can come up.
Come on up, Mr. Zach.
Zach Karamana, fifteen eleven University Drive, Am. Um, I mean, we could simply-
In, in the mic, in the mic.
We could simply look back at the video. We believe all these, these, uh, meetings are videoed, um, and Mr. Jackson's been at both, both meetings that we moved to rezone and the one for to get the alcohol license. Everything was explained out to everyone in this room. Um, so I'm not sure why we're discussing this as if he wasn't aware of this. He was in the meeting when it was voted on originally. Um, and number two, to address your concern about the, uh, downtown getting the, uh, well, that's on public property. We're talking about private property, so this is a very different matter. Um, and it's with the state of Louisiana, there's no, uh, actual addition of any of this needed. So this isn't talking about- So, this isn't talking about consumption on pro- public property. This is about private property.
Okay, okay. Uh, stay up here, please. I'm gonna ask you a few questions. Uh, did anybody notify the church about what's going on now?
Well, um, I'm not sure why I would personally notify every business, especially since it's outside of the three hundred foot range that is required by the city and state.
No, it's not, and you gonna have to, we gonna have to do a measurement. It's not outside of three hundred feet for them drinking alcohol. It's right on side of the church, so that, you're not gonna be able to tell me that. We'll have to do a measurement where we both can understand. And this is my first time ever seeing something like this, and Lisa, help me out, please. We don't have to notify the churches when we doing alcohol by them?
No, sir. That's not part of our ordinance or anything.
Well, it's funny, and, and now I'm taking it personal now. When I got ready to do a packaged liquor store on the west side of my club, which is one piece of property, the city had me to rezonate it, because it was less than three hundred feet from the church, the church on Mooney Avenue. So, I had to get that taken out of my, of the property where it be more than three hundred feet away from the church. That's what I had to do. And, and that's why I say, that's what I like about rules. Anything that we have rules and regulation, it's nothing to argue about, uh, or nothing to talk about. We have it on, it's in black and white. And that's why I'm, I'm really concerned, because when Zach and them come up, when they talked about it, it was supposed to be a bottling company, and we know this. You know, we gave them the approval, you know, even went for us, no concrete. Yeah, it's funny to you, but it's not funny when it come to our community. When, when he sat there, when they came before us, planning and zoning, I went to the meetings, planning and zoning, sit there and say, okay, they don't have to do asphalt. They don't have to do concrete. They did gravel. And so, which, whenever somebody say something, I pay attention to what's going on. So, you let them do the gravel. It's supposed to been a bottling company. When it all started out, that they was gonna package the alcohol across the street with a warehouse. They gonna hire people, and it were gonna be shipped out. Now, you know, we looking, and I can even say this, sir, a metal building. I wanted to do a metal building, got denied by the city. So, all these things we looking at now, all of a sudden, the rules done changed, and, and I wish Bobby still here. Yeah, so, these things taking place, and here you got the church members in here. And I don't even know how they was notified to, to know what's going on and nothing else, but now I see it's private. We don't have to tell nobody what we doing. So, I see that now, but we gonna have a problem, and it's not, it's not good at all. You know, these some things that the councilman, that planning and zoning, this should have been discussed. It really should have been discussed, not to just throwing it on the church members. You know, it's like your blind side. That's what's taking place.
I heard that too.
In, in the mic.
Uh, did y'all, did y'all got a permit to do that outside, across the street building and all this stuff? Did y'all get a permit to do that? Uh, we would like to see that permit, that y'all got to do that. We like to see it.
No problem.
But I, I, I don't believe that's true. But the other thing about these permits, I, I'm, I'm very disgusted with Bobby Mitchell. He gave the permits to who he want to give them to. On Sunland, they, they built two little houses. If you step out of the front house, you gonna step out in the street. And it, it, it just, it shouldn't be that. And, and, and it should have a distance between the houses. I think it's ten feet, but I'm not sure. But you can't hardly walk between them two houses. The houses right there on the street. But Bobby went on to give him a permit. We been working on a pub, uh, trying to get a permit for Power Ridge, down there, well, I'm not Power Ridge, but down there from my father-in-law, probably we got ten acres. We tried to get a permit for that. I met, and, and this thing came up out of the rezoning. I was led to believe that C.C., C.C. and this other lady was going to help me get this thing squared away, so we can have park trailer down on the front park.
Mr. Here. We'll deal with that in another time. Let's deal with the, with what on the paper right now.
Yeah, but it's all, uh-
I, I got you, but I wanna stick, stick to what's on the paper.
So, I'm finishing with, with them, because I, 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 I don't wanna get upset.
Okay.
Cause I ask God to forgive me when I get upset. And, uh, it's just not right, what they, what they doing. It's just not right. And we gonna do everything we can to stop it.
Okay. Anyone else from the public on this?
The ri- the original, uh, variance, uh, originally, whenever you came in there, uh, to get it set up on that side of the road, was it in it for a, uh, more of a production, uh, production based over there, not-
The rezoning?
Yeah, the rezoning to, to get it all approved on that side. It was meant for, I thought it was meant for moving your production of your beer on that side, and, and not, not more of a, 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 a business bar restaurant style, more of a the tastings and stuff were still gonna stay on that side of the street where they are now, and mainly more of a parking expansion and, and more of a, a production, everyday work environment, uh, per se, rather than for-
The rezoning was to, in part, to allow us to operate as a brewery on that side of the road as well, yes, which includes these things. So, um, at, in the time that we had that meeting, I said I cannot guarantee exactly the functions of the, of what will happen on that property. We need to rezone it to where it makes sense for us to purchase the property, and that's, that's why we rezoned it that way. Not very, not specifically to bottle or, uh, can or whatnot. It was rezoned to operate as the zoning allows.
I guess that's kinda what the church were, was getting at, is that, and I think they were on assumption of it was gonna be more so that, not full expansion of, of everything.
We're not expanding point of sale or selling alcohol on that side of the property. It's, we're not even asking for that.
I apologize, this, I think this came before the planning and zoning prior to my stepping back on planning and zoning, I think, if I'm correct.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Uh, are, are we saying that there was a misrepresentation as to what was to be built and operated on this property?
Uh, as of what I recall, I thought it was different than what it is now. I, I don't have that in front of me, uh, but, um, I remember with, with the, uh, what it was first introduced, introduced to us was, and I think that's when the church was there. I think they didn't want any really alcohol over there, but it was more of a, a building, uh, jobs and, and expansion of their operation, but giving them more room across the street for parking and, and everything they need to, you know, to, to, to get that out of the way on the other side where they at right now, to give them more room doing what they're doing on that side. So, I think that's kinda what they were saying as far as being a little, you know, they were for it originally, but a little, cause it's in my district, but it's right next to the bond, so I think that's kinda where, where the confusion, I think, comes upon. So, I don't know what it actually said, the introductory, cause it's been a while, but I don't think it was that.
Well, there is some, some concerns for me. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking personally now, not for planning and zoning, as a planning and zoning commissioner. Uh, the Power Ridge Church building, uh, I built that building. Uh, I actually purchased that land along with the church, that three acres of land, and, uh, it was, we were very meticulous and specific as to where that church would be locate, relocated to. And I think it's a beautiful structure. It's, it's a great enhancement to that neighborhood and that community. And secondly, when we talk about the three hundred foot rule, we have to also understand that the church is property, they parking lot, and property and ownership is at the line less than a hundred feet from what, what we talking about. So, that's an issue. Uh, secondly, the building that's over there, I, I don't know what happened and what fell through the cracks, but, uh, that building is not a building that's, that's by code is allowed in the city of Hammond. Uh, the, the front facade doesn't meet our criterias. Uh, the translucent doesn't meet our tr- meet our cr- uh, criteria. Uh, and I don't know what, what a breakdown is, but, um, this, this is something that we really need to definitely look at closely as we move forward, or if we move forward. Council has the right to do wherever they please. Uh, but, um, but having a, a business of this, of this type in that proximity to the church should have never happened. Secondly, secondly, um, the request for the, the mobilization of alcohol from the south side of that street to the north side of that street, that should never happen. Thirdly, I don't know how or why it's happening. But we were at a function at Power Ridge with my family and my grandchildren. And, um, one of the individuals over there, that's buying and drinking beer, almost ran over my granddaughter. And, um, that concerned me, and, and I see where the street is totally blocked off at certain times. So, I'm assuming they're getting a special permit and paying a fee to do that, because we have police vehicles parked there, blocking the street off. That's, I'm, I hope we're charging them for that, for the time of those officers, for the time of those vehicles, because if I wanna have a block party in my neighborhood, the city of Hammond is not gonna bring up, uh, a unit and park there in my neighborhood and block the street off. Uh, it's like a bark, block party every time you turn around. This is a really bad situation. And I feel really bad that the city allowed it. It should not be. I don't care who it is. Place of worship is a place of worship, and that's the reason why rules and regulations are put in place for that. Again, uh, personal to me, because, uh, I, I guided this congregation. They spent hundreds of thousands, almost over a million dollars in early two thousand, where people said that it would never happen, but that per- that place was developed and built, and they walked in there with pride, knowing that this is our new home. And I, I just, this, this is not right at all. Thank you.
Uh, to directly address a few of those concerns, um, I apologize if there was a, an incident on the road, but, uh, you know, I hate to say it, we had the exact incident in the opposite way the other day, where someone leaving church almost ran over one of my customers. So, we could, we wanna nitpick and talk about, if we wanna nitpick and talk about little substantial, some things that happened throughout, that's, that's one thing. But we're here to discuss the fact that we are a licensed business to operate, to put beer into containers. And if you take that home to consumer, you take that across the street to this other property, it's, that's what we're doing. We're not trying to skirt any laws or do anything like that. Um, it's, it's done a lot for the community, and other, if you would like, we could, you know, have a lot of people speak up for it. We had quite an influential meeting this morning, but, um, the building itself, I, I think it's done nothing, but, I mean, we've put a lot of money into doing everything we can to make it look as nice as possible. And if you haven't driven by there, I ask you, please. Uh, what we've done in that, with the original building and, and our grounds and the gardening and the field and the parking lot and the building itself, it's gorgeous. It's, it's a beautiful building. We spent a lot of money, uh, on it. So, um, I'm not sure. Uh, I guess I get a little emotional when people say that what we're doing is somehow bringing an area down when we feel like we're doing everything we can to bring it up, and not gonna even talk about the countless charity events that we do, uh, over the year. And I think last year was almost a hundred charities we donated to. So, uh, what we do as a business is nonetheless, uh, is no less than, uh, kind of a rare thing in, in the business world, the amount of money that we donate, even the eight thousand dollars, over eighty thou- eight thousand dollars that we donated locally, to the museum right there, um, you know, uh, in, in our own neighborhood. So, I, I, I just, I, I ask, please, don't consider this as a deviant, or, uh, we've had nine years of operation, not a single call, not a single incident with alcohol. I think we had somebody lock their keys in their car, and that's the only time the police have been called out for one of our customers. So, uh, we are upstanding citizens, and we do everything we can to maintain that and only improve on the area. And I ask nothing to get around any kind of laws or anything like that. All we're trying to do is bring the Hammond and bring this area up as we operate a business that we feel passionate about, uh, and spread the word of, of the city throughout the state and, and country right now. So, um, does anybody else has any questions for me?
Uh, I don't, I don't think it was anything personal. I think it was more so about the planning as far as being a public safety with the roads being closed down and everything else, the church being there for worship, being approved, with them thinking that it wasn't gonna be, you know, as full-blown out alcohol across the street by them, so more of a planning thing, nothing that you are doing from community, community is not right or whatnot. More so of a, uh, as of a, um, the, the planning of it as, as being an effect. And, you know, the metal building is a metal building. I mean, it shouldn't have, it should have been more so like, I mean, it doesn't meet the requirements that I read on. I mean, it's sheet metal, so I mean, I'm, you know, it's nice to you.
It was really expensive.
Yeah, um, yeah, everything's expensive right now, so, uh, uh, plywood, everything, but, uh, but, but, uh, but anyway, so, um, I don't know, uh, but I understand it, it's, uh, you know, but at the end of the day, I, I don't think the, the original, original, you know, re- uh, variance and approval was, was that, I don't think that was really discussed so much. It was more so of a parking lot expansion and, and expansion, and make sure y'all are able to keep up with y'all's workload of, of, uh, production. And, and that was more so on that side. So, uh, that's how I remembered, as I made me miss, miss, uh-
I, I stood right here and said that I will not, back then, I will not say exactly what we will or will not do on that property. That's what I, fervent, is what I said, because my business is growing, and I cannot tell you what we will need to do in the future to grow as a business, to stay alive and to continue operating in this, uh, in this economy. So, um, it, you know, by that means, I mean, everything that you rezone or you zone or you, you go into business, if I have to tell you right now what I'm gonna do twenty years from now, I mean, that would, that would limit a lot of people what they do for a living, I think, right now. So, um, I just wanna make sure that, that I'm clear about that, is I, I did not say specifically what we were going to do, and I said that specifically that I would not say that. Uh, so I would not create any misconse- misconceptions or misunderstandings about what we're doing.
Because you cannot say something and knowing what you're gonna do is just like you say in it. And, and, and to withhold information just to get your project passed through and utilize whatever network you have to force feed an operation upon a church is not right. And for this city to sit here and accept this.
I have a question. I have a question too. My question is, why is this something the city should improve, uh, approve if it's private property? Like, why, this is not a, a license to sell alcohol, so why is this, it's not public property, why is this before us? And he said that the state doesn't require it. Why are we, why is it before us?
Because you have to cross the street.
You gotta cross the street. This is public street.
Okay.
With a closed container.
With an open container.
With the closed container. What we talked about, crossing the street with the closed container. The idea is once you're, once you're across the street, it becomes an open container space, and that's what I thought we did have to have approval on.
I think you do. I, I don't think you can, just like downtown, you can't have an open container going from business to business, so the street separates the premises.
But you just said it's a closed container if you-
We're selling closed containers.
You're selling closed containers.
To go be consumed on private property.
I think this deals with open, my understanding was in, it's an open, you waving the-
And we don't even know what we talking about.
Well, they don't have, they do not have a permit for open containers across the street.
So, we, we talked about originally when this, when this fine time catering came forward, uh, for this location. We talked about whether they would need a restaurant permit, but they're not selling any alcohol. Like, we talked about whether the sixty-forty rule would apply to them, sixty percent food sales or other sales versus forty percent, um, alcohol sales. But they're not selling any alcohol. The alcohol is being sold across the street at the tasting kitchen, and then with a, with a lid on it, and then, or in the can itself, closed, and then brought across the street into the business there.
The open container applies to any can, jar, cup, or vessel for which the brewer's seal has been broken, including pull tabs and bottle caps. So, if, if you're selling a can of beer, unopened- So if, if you're selling a can of beer unopened at gnarly barley, you can put that unopened, you can put that can of beer in your car, drive to your car and go wherever you want to go and then open it when you get there, assuming it's in a lawful place. My, when, when this was brought to me, my concern was having an open container of alcohol across a public street.
Well, that shouldn't be done at any time.
And that's why we talked. Except, no, that's why, that's why you would have to get a variance for that.
Well, that's why we talked about putting the lid on it.
Yes.
And that was, that was our recommendation instead of crossing the street with the open.
Correct, correct. That's what, that's what we had talked about.
But I guess the question now is to make sure everybody's a hundred percent clear. If somebody's taking a closed container that they have just purchased, walking across the street with the closed container, it is not open. And then opening it when they come into the area where Fine Time is operating and selling food, is there any prohibition on that?
Well, one of the things that came up when this was proposed to be built was the food truck issue. And this somewhat eliminated the food trucks. That's why my understanding was building this facility.
Kitchen was built to eliminate the issues with food trucks.
Now the alcohol.
Appease the city for that, but.
Okay. Now you're talking about food trucks. Biggest day I heard, you don't want food trucks to sell alcohol. Okay? No food truck over there by Zach was selling alcohol. And I don't know if nobody catching on and I respect Zach for what he's saying and what he doing. He sat there when he's talking, he's talking in a riddle that you not understanding. So when he went across the street, he never said exactly what he was going to do. But I'm gonna say me personally, when I get ready to do something, I got to have it all on paper, what I'm gonna do before it gets zoned to anything. So now, and I respect him for that, he never said what he was going to do. He's looking at 20 years down the line. He's looking at 10 years down the line. So I respect him for what he said. But the problem is planning and zoning shouldn't have never approved this without knowing exactly what he was going to do. I don't, he wasn't on the board at the time. And I went to the meetings because the community called me and about, they're still going on the thing, they still. And so now what we saying is, and, and what's your name again? Yes, Mr. Casey. Mr. Casey ain't never saw nothing like this before. Let's stop trying to, and I'm gonna say sneak something, let's stop, stop trying to sneak something and be plain as day. Everybody in here know what an open container is. All of us know. So is it easy open or it's closed? But we shouldn't have to go back and forth with this here because an open container is across the street. Now, once you cross the street and open it then, it's open container. Was it as close? No, no, hold up, hold up. Don't talk while I'm talking. Now, we know this here. Once they get across the street, they open it, it's open container. You cannot, and I never heard of this before, and all of us up here, we never heard this before. Whenever you doing something downtown, DDD, all of them come up here and ask for a waiver for an open container. If he was to come ask for a waiver for this night, this night, this night, be exact, Halla Davidson, whenever they came, 12 months out of a year, they asked for an open container. We know this here. Now, all of a sudden, we all confused. We shouldn't be confused and then more than anything, nobody hearing the word church. Nobody hearing the word church. It's a church across the street. The church was there before he got there. The church sat there and said it was okay to make beer there. The church never realized they're going to be tasting beer there. Come on. We shouldn't even be having this discussion no more. It's a church in the community. Be exact, it's two churches there. One of them closed. It's a church less than a hundred feet from where they drinking it. It's a church. If you don't hear nothing else, it's a church in the community. Now you can speak.
So to be, thank you. So to be clear, this is actually happening in other places. In fact, all businesses in Louisiana that uh, operate as a restaurant only with no alcohol license are allowed to do what you call BYOB is bring your own container of alcohol, wine, spirits or beer onto the premise and open your own beer and consume. Um, Renaissance Festival also followed this rule during COVID when they were not allowed to get an alcohol license because of the COVID restrictions. So this is something that is actually happening all over the place. It's been for years. There's uh, there's a lot of examples of this or not the only one.
Good evening, Council. My name is Chris Grand. I'm four three 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 four, South Coburn Loop in Hammond. I was the general contractor for the project. Um, and I'm also here representing the professional of record for the project. I wanted to just respond to the questions that came up with regard to the permitting of the project. Uh, the project was fully permitted by the City of, um, City of Hammond. Code review was done by the professional of record and also the plan reviewer for the City of Hammond at the permit office. Um, no exceptions were taken with regard to the use. The site is zoned for the use of the building as reviewed and permitted. Um, you know, the zoning of that particular piece of property allows a litany of uses. Um, the specific use is within the allowable use of the property as it is currently zoned, which is a commercial kitchen and an event space. So I just wanted to clarify that this was not zoned, this was not permitted as a bar. Okay? It was not permitted to sell alcohol. There is no li, there's no alcohol license associated with this particular building at seventeen ten Corbin. Okay? Um, with regard to the question why, why a metal building was allowed to be built on that site, it was reviewed by the City of Hammond. It was determined to be within the, the current ordinances for that particular piece of property as it is zoned. Uh, the opportunity to bring that up was when the project was at the permit office being reviewed. The building is built.
Let me ask you something real quick. Who, who reviewed those plans of, of that, of the design of the building?
Robert Morgan.
Okay. I was just checking.
Well, who else would have reviewed them?
I have no idea. That's why I'm asking. He's not there no more. I mean, we don't really have, I mean, you know, it, there, it's been a different, you know, people in there in that office a while. That's why I'm asking because, I'm asking because it doesn't meet the, the, the facade building.
It most.
It's, it, that's not architectural, that's not architectural metal.
That is an issue to be addressed with the permit office.
Exactly. I'm, I'm not addressing it. My question I asked you was who reviewed it? Do you not remember my question? My question was who reviewed? That's all I asked you. That's all I wanted to know was who reviewed? And you said it, you answered and I appreciate it. Now I know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have any questions for the contractor for the building? The building was fully permitted, reviewed, determined to be within the applicable ordinances of the City of Hammond at the time.
And that's not your, that's not your problem to deal with because you don't work for the city. You turn the plans and then they approved it. So I just wanted to know who, who, uh, who approved it. That's it.
The city building official.
That's it.
Thank you very much, Council.
So I wanted to put on record because I went back and looked at the minutes from the meeting where the zoning happened, June twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, because they're all online. Um, it says, uh, Councilman Devon Wells asked, are you planning to sell alcohol on the property? Zach Karamata stated, currently, we do not. We're not eliminating the possibility in the future. This is a summary, so you'd have to watch the, the actual video. And then I asked, uh, would current zoning allow alcohol sales if met all requirement sales for restaurants? And then Tracy Schalacy from the building department said, yes, but the business would need other approvals for alcohol sales in the future. So just because there was conversation about what was said previously, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that as we're discussing.
But we're not talking about any sales.
Correct. Right.
Do we need to change this resolution? Because a little while ago, we got into a discussion about open container, closed container. So what, what exactly are we trying to?
Well, if it's closed container, there's nothing for us to do.
We need your help, Andre.
Yeah, if, if it's closed container, then you don't have to waive anything.
Right.
This was intended to cover an open container being transported from gnarly barley across the street.
Which is a terrible idea because why would you carry an open drink across the street?
And which they had never intended to do. That I, I guess we had miscommunication on this because that was, that was when I remember you suggested make sure they have the lid on it or make sure that it's.
Not open. No, no, no.
Right, or it's unopened. And that's, that was never their intention was to ask for an open container across, like walking across the street. It was always to determine what would happen inside this building that has been built that is serving and selling food.
So even the way that this is worded, say we wanted to say a, a drink that's been opened, but you stick a top on top of it, that doesn't even meet this because this is saying the open container at the cafe that's in the business, in, in, on that property. We don't need an open container waiver for that property. It's not city property. And this doesn't read an open container to cross public property. Like when we do the open containers, we have the boundary of it.
Or events. Right.
Events. You, you do need a waiver of an open container for public streets. That's what it is.
Right, but it, this doesn't even say public streets.
Understood.
Doesn't have a timeframe on it either.
There's no, there's no, no. That's why you need, we need to have a waiver.
But that's not what they're seeking. That's, that was never their, that was never their question. That was never what they wanted to be able to do.
I, I, it should just be removed.
This should, yeah. I mean, everybody's got a chance to speak, yeah.
My name is Vern McGee and uh, I've been going to church at Pear Ridge for 20 years.
In the mic?
And uh.
In the mic.
I was keeping up the ground. And during the time I was keeping up the ground, they was having some get together over there. And they had a lot of people's parking in the parking lot, parking on the, on the church ground. And they run it up the ground with nothing done about it. Matter of fact, we called the policeman and the policeman came and blocked the entrance to the church. And they still came in and parked. And this going across the street, I see the little children out there too. And they going across the street. Somebody going to get hurt. It's really a bad situation. And you drinking alcohol too, you're not in your right mind. Something need to be done. And I don't know why Hammond councilmen's did that. I really don't. It's not in nobody else's neighborhood. Why they had to choose that one? Because it's a church? We trying to serve God. It's not right. Something need to be done about it. And I think the mayor could do it and this council. But since money involved, I guess it blind all the eyes. It's a sad situation. Somebody going to get killed out there.
They had an event today and they come parked in our church parking lot. Cars was everywhere. They have no respect for the church. No respect. Because we put up a, a, a thing that blocked people coming in. Somebody ran into it and brought, and tore it down. So today, they just drove in and did what they wanted to. Thank you.
Just to be clear, that was a couple of cars that did park uh, in the church and we do our best to keep them out of the church. Uh, was not aware that the barricade was no longer there. Um, I believe that there was the lieutenant governor's vehicle that actually ended up in the church parking lot. Apologize for that. Uh, but also you, your funerals all take up our parking lot as well and we don't say anything about that. So I think it's kind of both ways. So.
Ma'am, you have.
Pam, four three five oh two Robinson Road. I heard Mr. Henry and I heard everybody that got up and spoke. How y'all letting this happen? I pass through that street a lot. Containers are open, they're crossing and they're open. Yes, it's dangerous on them. How, how does he have this much pull that he can do what he wants? And he's sitting there arrogantly about it. That's not right. That's not right. This is a church. It's not right. You wouldn't want it by your neighborhoods. We accept too much and I agree with the man. Money talks, huh? Don't let nobody get hurt. How y'all letting it happen and how you can get away with anything that he wants to do? It's not right.
Brian Pochet, owner of Fine Time Catering, uh, three nine four eight five Craft Drive Punch Tula. This will be our second business that we are currently opening. We've also invested a substantial amount of money in this. And the resolution is to obtain a waiver of the open container law for our business, not anything else. That's what we're looking at today. That's all we're doing. If they cross the street with a closed container, this should be a non-issue. Right? That's what we're looking at right now and it seems pretty clear to me. So that, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir. It's not clear. And the problem is, I apologize for you investing a lot. Yeah, but it should have been clear with the church. That's what we losing out on. You have a cafe. Nobody have a problem with the cafe.
Okay.
But it's the alcohol that's going over there.
Every other restaurant in the state of Louisiana is able to obtain this?
Yes, it is.
Sir.
Sorry.
Yes, but in the meantime, sir, anytime a restaurant is by a church, they have to get permission from the church in order to do it. You knew what your plans was and I ask again, how many time did anybody reach out to the church? It's not about the alcohol because God knows, I drink alcohol. I have nothing against alcohol. It's about the alcohol by the church. I just ask, did anybody reach out to the church? That's all I ask. Did anybody reach out to the church?
So back to the conversation beforehand, uh, my understanding is that I, I actually don't need, I mean, we're not really asking for anything here anymore, right?
Well, you, you, there cannot be an open container of alcohol brought from gnarly barley to Fine Time Catering.
Don't plan on doing that.
Well, then it's moot.
Okay, so, all right, so we don't need this.
Moot. Does he, do we ask for him to remove it or do we remove it?
The council.
We remove it.
Yeah, it's up to the council.
Make a motion to remove.
Second.
So when they're walking across the street with their open containers and they're having service, what happens?
They, they're in violation of the alcohol.
It happens all the time. Every day. Every day. It's happening.
So who, who, who does she need to contact if she sees it?
The police.
Police department? Okay.
I think it's clear that we did not just empower more of it, right? Because that, if this would have passed, it would have been, oh, let's open the beer and walk across the street. It's no problem. Well, I, I understand that that may be happening, but we, we didn't just give them permission to do it.
Okay, so when I come up and ask for a business and I just leave everything blank, I should be able to get away with Mr. Zach just got away with.
Yeah, you probably have to get with Robert Morgan though.
No, because I know food trucks just went through something and the food truck sat there every day. So they got a special permit every day? They got a, a special permit every day that food truck sat there for months? So how they able to do everything they doing? Because if you pass by there tomorrow, somebody's going to be walking across that street. And he's sitting there smirk because he know y'all allowing it to happen.
Councilor has a motion in second that needs a vote on the motion to remove.
Call the vote, Miss Lisa, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divataria.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
Aye.
Reports, Mayor.
Uh, congratulations to the city and the workers of the city. Whitney, Statham, Carleese, Robert Williams and Lynn and their teams along with Ace for helping clean up the city for this event. We won the number one small city in the state again for the fourteenth year in a row. Also, Zach and Carrie left, but today they actually got the award of the Louisiana Attraction of the Year from Louisiana Tourism.